All right. I would like to call the October Border Regents Meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is going to be held today as a committee of the whole. Therefore, all members are going to vote on each recommended motion. Our system representative colleagues who serve on that, serve on the standing committees, they also vote on matters that usually become before the committees they serve on. As always, our meeting is being livestreamed, so please turn your microphones on while you're speaking. And so we now move to call the roll call, Doreen.
Regent Davi.
Here.
Regent Ewing.
Here.
Regent Finley.
Here.
Regent Levy. Regent Lowbry.
Here.
Regent May. Regent McDonald. Regent Mier.
Here.
Regent Perez.
Here.
Regent Pryor.
Here.
Regent Seal.
Here.
Regent Solomon.
Here.
Regent Sterling.
Here.
U L system rep. LSU system rep.
Here.
Southern system rep.
I'm going to call you there.
You have a call.
Thank you, Doreen. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Doreen, have we received any public comments?
Yes.
No, we have not. If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Members, you've received a copy of the minutes from our September 21, 2022 meeting. Have a motion to approve these minutes?
We approve all.
Seal second by Regent Perez. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I just want to take a moment to thank the board for coming here to my home, New Orleans. Super happy we're here to see and experience some of our post-secondary workforce development efforts here in New Orleans. We've had a great two days. We started yesterday with all of you going out to the NASA Mischu facility. Touring that campus was really eye-opening of what's happening in New Orleans East. And then touring today here at Delgado, equally impressive. Regent Lowbry, you've been enjoyed, we've enjoyed being here on your campus, meeting your SGA colleagues this morning as well. So thanks for opening the campus to us. I'd like to turn the mic over to you to report to the board.
Thank you so much, Regent Solomon. So I'm going to give my report as the student board member. So recently, we just had our first COSP meeting, and we got together at the beautiful SU Law Center. We had our student body president, Nadia Foster, host us. We had guest speakers, State Representative Ed Lavardanen and Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. And they discussed the importance of mental health preventative measures and how to de-stigmatize mental health in the communities to help in gauging people to get health. Along with some of the other things we got to go over in our meeting, we had a wonderful presentation, a human trafficking presentation by Dr. Dana Hunter, the executive director of the Governor's Office of Human Trafficking. And we learned about, we also received some literature in human trafficking about signs, phone numbers, prevention, kind of like what to stay away from, listening to people's stories of what's happened to them. And we received sticky notes to place in areas where victims can find them, if they find themselves alone, they can reach out for help. And all of it was very informative. We had a really great first meeting. Our next meeting should be next month, and we're very excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Regent Lowbry. Members, I know that Chair Temple mentioned it last month, and I think many of you or all of you have probably seen the letter to the editor published in yesterday's Advocate. We are quickly approaching Election Day on November 8th, so I want to make sure that everyone is reminded about Constitutional Amendment Number One. Barry Erwin from the Council for Federal Louisiana called the Amendment Number One "the most important amendment on the ballot this fall," and we certainly echo Mr. Erwin's sentiment. Unanimously approved by the legislature, Constitutional Amendment One is an option multiplier for the state treasurer. It gives the office flexibility that it needs to adjust investment approaches when it's the right time to do so. To be very clear, it's not a mandate, it's an option multiplier. It merely expands the options that the treasurer has to manage the Louisiana Education Quality Trust Fund and to support K-12 schools, colleges, universities, and post-secondary education research. The public expects our education leaders to use all the tools available to deliver on our promise of increased educational attainment, and that's why I'm personally voting yes on November 8th for Constitutional Amendment One. I certainly invite you all to join us doing so. Finally, Chair Temple asked that I present the names of the nominating committee to board this afternoon. The nominating committee brings forward the recommended slate of officers to our December meeting for the board's consideration and approval of those officers. The members who have been appointed to the nominating committee by Chair Temple this year are Regent Seal, Regent Davi, Regent Perez, Regent Pryor, and Regent Sterling. So thank you all, all five of you, for your willingness to serve on this committee. With that, my remarks are concluded, and our next agenda item is reports and recommendations. We're going to begin with Finance. Our deputy commissioner for Finance and Administration, Matthew Laubriere, is going to present the item, the approval of the preliminary formula funding and budget request for fiscal year 2023 to '24. So Matthew, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Regent Solomon. We'll start off with the goal to get to 85,000 completers by 2030 for the master plan. Since releasing the master plan in 2019, each budget request that we've made since then has aligned to the master plan to get us there, and this year is no different. The budget request that you are about to see is supporting the pathway to 2030, which we've discussed over the last couple of meetings. So on this slide, there's a few things to take in. On the far left is the current year where we sit now with all the funding by different entities, by two-year, four-year, specialized institutions, boards, TOPS, and GO grants. The column immediately following that is the cost to fully fund higher education in the state of Louisiana. So we're at 1.2 billion now, we need 2.1 billion. The next slide after that is what it would cost to fully fund higher education, what additional funds we need, and that's 880 million. And on the end is the request that we're bringing before you for $280 million. So into the request. So our request is based on three distinct requests. There's talent development and student success, affordability, and targeted request. So in the first part of that is the master plan credential alignment. This request is to make sure that we'll have two pots for two-year and four-year and specialized, each at $40 million, to make sure that programs align to workforce needs and to develop programs that also align to workforce needs. Talent recruitment and investment. In the past couple of years, we've brought faculty pay for your consideration, and we've been successful at getting that funded. This request is for the institutions to allocate funds for faculty and staff pay or any additional programs that they see fit for student success objectives for 75 million. The next for 18 million is support the formula for two-year and four-year institutions. This will allow us to continue moving the methodology for the formula from where we currently sit at 28% outcomes to 30% outcomes, and 17% cost to 20% cost, and decrease the reliance on the base funding to 50%, which is where we ultimately want to be. So this will be our last major step, moving the formula. Specialized, I'm sorry, mandated cost is next at 17 million. We do not know the full number of what we'll need for mandated costs, so this is a projection right now. But this is to fund increases in retirement, risk management, health insurance, and any other costs that the institutions have associated with that. And then finally is the support for specialized institutions. So for our med schools, ag centers, pharmacy school, and Southern Law School, this is a request to increase their base funding as well, to support their work. Moving on to affordability, the first one is dual enrollment funding at 25 million. This would allow us to provide increased dual enrollment to high school students to where we would be able to fund one dual enrollment class for each junior and senior that's eligible in the state of Louisiana in public high schools. So it's a very large request, but it's a very important request that aligns to our pathway to 2030. Moving down is the request for GO grants. So in the past couple of years, we've been able to increase GO grants by $25 million, where we doubled, almost doubled the funding. This is a continued request to get us to $70 million in GO grant funding. It puts us about halfway to the fully funded cost, but it's a big increase for the students that are in most need. Next is TOPS project, TOPS increase of 7 million. This is a projection right now based on the TOPS projection model. As we get closer to the executive budget, this number will change based on billings, but we do want to make a note of the request now since the model does request that. Going into targeted request, the next one is the, yes?
Textbook for a building.
Oh, yes. Can't forget about that one. So this is a request we bring every year for 2.5 million to expand e-textbooks and online educational resources. This year's request will be to target those in-demand careers like nursing and allied health, so we can have our faculty create textbooks, electronic textbooks, or resources that the students can use so we can decrease their cost outside of tuition and fees. This is the place that we can make the most direct impact to save students money on textbooks. And this would be run through our Louisiana Library Network, Lewis, which is in the Board of Regents. The next one for targeted request is for the National Cancer Center designation for 16 million. So this would allow institutions to come together to increase faculty, staff, and research to start heading towards that NCI designation that the state desperately needs. The next one is 7 million for outreach programs at LOSPA. So currently LOSPA has over $5 million dedicated to outreach through the GIRA program. That program is a federally funded program with 3.5 million in federal funds. It is going away at the end of this fiscal year. So this request includes 3.5 million to continue providing those outreach services, but also expand those outreach services from high school to also target adults. So this request would be covering all population groups in the state to provide outreach for post-secondary. The next one is cyber-targeted investments. So this would increase what Dr. Denly mentioned this morning about the cyber education fund in targeting those programs that are moving cyber forward, but also allow us to start building a cyber curriculum for all institutions. So this would, this would help us jumpstart that. And then finally, we have a $2 million request for LumCon. So LumCon is opening a new facility in Homa early in 2023. So this would help support that facility and also allow us to increase or bring staff back to where they were years ago so we can have LumCon fully staffed and support the work that they are doing. And so that concludes the request. Happy to answer any questions on the request.
Thank you, Matthew. Members, are there any questions? Regent Ewing.
Can you, as I mentioned, our programs increase the funding, we feel good to use that extra 15 million. I don't have top of the 25 million they already have, or that reduction. I'm not sure that I'm clear.
So this would be an increase. So currently, so three years ago, GO grants was at 20, right around 29 million. We added 11 million to get us to 40 million, and we added another 15 to get us to 55. This would get us to 70 million. So it's 15 million on top of what we already have.
And so that, is that going to enable us to meet that demand? Are we still going to be short, or?
So we'll still be short. Currently, only about half of the students that are eligible for GO grants receive one. We have about 60,000 students that are eligible, and we award about 30 students, 30,000 students. So this request allows the institutions to add more students that are currently receiving or increase the awarded amounts that students receive, or a combination of both. So if we wanted to fully fund GO grants to meet the current packaging policy of the institutions, we need another $73 million to get there. If we wanted to do the full GO grant award of $3,000 for every student, we need 125 million to get there. So for what we need, this request is small, but it's a, it's a step in the right direction.
Well, I'm fully in support of the program. What type of monitoring do we have in place to see how those funds are used effectively for those students? And what they're, you know, are they, are these funds effectively used to help students? And do we have any way to know the effect it has?
So Dr. Bute is coming up, but we do collect, when the institutions build the awards, we receive that information. This is audited by our internal auditor, Post-Wake Netterville, as well as the legislative auditor audits it. LOSPA does their own auditing of the program. So we are ensuring that students are receiving the funds as they, as they need it. In addition, once a student is Pell eligible, that's the trigger that a student is eligible for a GO grant. So as they fill out their FAFSA and they become Pell eligible, that triggers them in their financial aid office to receive a, be eligible for a GO grant.
So we, we have a good accountability program in place, Dr. Bute.
I think we do, and Sue On can certainly add.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We do. We actually, LOSPA receives all of the packaging policies for each of the institutions, and we review those packaging policies to make sure that there are no irregularities. In addition, the awarding for GO grant is an automated process. So if a student receives Pell and it's within that campus's packaging policy, you've actually made some policy changes by removing the 60% to make it easier for campuses to award students and reduce their loan debt. So these are some very progressive moves that you made in helping students reduce loan debt with GO grant.
Fine, thank you. I just think it's so important that this, that these funds, I, I think what we're doing with these funds is extremely important. It is targeting a group that needs the help and support and encouragement. So that's my question, and I was just asking. The other thing that I guess I'd ask you, Matthew, is, is can you refresh me on the National Cancer Institute designation?
That's you want me to help you out with that.
Been told before, but I don't remember. Or you got it written down, huh?
So as Dr. Reed likes to say, I will phone a friend on this one. So between Regent Sterling and Regent Mier, I think they can answer your questions on this one.
So you may recall, and I don't know if this is on the top, you may recall at our budget hearing, President Tate talked about his five-point Pentagon Agenda, and one of those being the B is biomedical, and under that, the partnership with LSU under the flagship A&amp;M campus, bringing to bear the resources to bring NCI designation as premier cancer to the state. And so that is money that is earmarked. They have already received a $50 million grant from the LCMC Health System, and a part of NCI designation is demonstrating that the state, as well as the community, is to prepare to support you in the realm of about 200 to 250 million dollars. So this is helping to demonstrate that we are going to bring the scientists to Louisiana and be able to achieve designation.
Do you happen to know if there are going to be other efforts to include other diseases, Alzheimer's, things like that, that have initiatives behind them like this that we will be looking at?
So all of that is a part of those other pieces, those specific things in the Pentagon Agenda, but the NCI designation component is solely focused on cancer. Now, I will say there is a huge piece of that that also relates to obesity. There's a component that also relates to food and other things and other environmental factors that contribute to cancer, and so it is a holistic view of all of the things. And so LSU A&amp;M's agriculture is a part, their veterinary science and the basic science that is typically done on animals before you get to humans. And so all of the LSU A&amp;M campus will be aligned, a part of that, as well as the med schools and then the other clinical partners, such as.
Pennington?
Pennington, Tulane, and all of the other entities. So it's a big tent of everyone who's doing that work.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Chairman, I took a tour of LSU's, I guess, dentistry program with the LSU Health Center, Science Center representatives were there, and they're putting 74 million dollars into infrastructure, to facilities regarding, around NCI, so around the NCI designation. So there's ongoing, there's ongoing LSU directly, as well as in the downtown area, New Orleans and medical corridor for, for NCI.
Regent Seal, do you have a question?
Matthew, I wanted to request the spreadsheet information for the support formula for institution allocation, and I'd like to have presented a compare formula to see if the prior years involved.
Sure, thanks. We can do it.
Members, are there other questions? Is there a motion to approve the state general fund operating budget request for all higher education systems, boards, and agencies for the fiscal year?
I have approval.
Regent Perez, is there a second? Regent Mier? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to facilities and property.
Regent Solomon, I just want to make one more comment.
Yes, you please.
Now that the board has approved the request, to fulfill that request, we send a letter to the Commission of Administration outlining that request by November 1st, and so that will complete the budget request for higher education.
Excellent. Thank you, Matthew. Thanks for all of you and your team's work getting us to this point so far. Next, we're going to move on to facilities and property. Chris Herring, Associate Commissioner for Facilities Planning and Disaster Services, is going to guide us through these items. Our first item is the interim emergency board request from Southern Shreveport. Chris, can you please present this item?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our first item, as you mentioned, involves a request to take a project to the interim emergency board to change the scope of work. State entities are allowed to do this for a limited number of reasons. In this case, Southern University Shreveport received an appropriation in Houseville II to renovate Lewis Collier Hall on their campus, and once the designers got into it, it was realized that the amount appropriated was not sufficient enough to cover the entirety of the renovation of the facility. For this reason, they would like to use the architect that's already been selected to build a annex facility across the street. The appropriation's only for $4 million, and this will provide them 6,000 square feet to provide some laboratory space while they await funding for the major renovation, which is a little over $16 million. Right now, the building, the Collier Hall is closed. They're unable to use it. The kids are doing most of their lab experiments virtually, so this is their effort to get something up quicker, to provide the kids lab space while they wait on the full renovation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Members, you've heard the recommendation from senior staff. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Regent Finley, second by Regent Mier. Any discussion or questions? All, please, in favor, signify by saying aye. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to note, do we anticipate this kind of situation for any of the other similar expenditures? Do you think? Because this is very common in this environment, our current environment.
Right. Chris, can you address that?
Yes, I mean, typically, they, the institutions will seek additional funding through the capital outlay process, but this one was so severely off, 4 million to 16 million, that they decided it would be more efficient use of funds in time to construct the annex across the street and then secure the, this larger portion during an upcoming legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. We had a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. The next item is the fiscal year 2023, '24 capital outlay budget recommendation. Chris, please proceed.
Yes, sir. The slide on the screen represents a summary of the capital outlay projects that we're recommending for the next funding cycle in '23, '24. We received 230 requests from all the systems for projects this year, so we're recommending 97 of these be approved for funding next cycle. Of that 97, 68 are projects that have previously received funding, and as of tomorrow's bond commission, an additional three will receive funding. So essentially, 71 out of that 97 consist of projects that have already received some level of funding, either from the state or self-generated dollars, or both. The additional 29 represents new projects that have not been funded at any level as of yet. So those recommend the new projects. Again, you can see it's spread across all four systems. In addition to these projects, we're also requesting $170 million in deferred maintenance for the next funding cycle. We asked the schools and systems to identify their top two priorities at each institution, so we're including that submission with our recommendation, which includes also another list of building demolition projects similar to the list that we completed a few years ago. I'd be happy answering questions about a specific project or any other questions you may have on the recommendation itself.
Thank you, Chris. Members, is there a motion to approve this item and to further approve giving staff the authority to make changes resulting from action taken by the bond commission during the October meeting?
I'll make the motion as chair.
Regent Mier?
Second.
Second by Regent Finley. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. Thank you.
Let me just ask.
Yes, sir.
When we present these requests, do you do that in person, or do you just send an email or a letter in, or do we have an opportunity to discuss the worthiness of the proposed request, or how would that happen?
We typically meet with institutions in advance of compiling this.
Would you meet with the Commission of Administration? How in their sense, how would that happen?
Usually, we start with submitting a letter with this recommendation, and then we have discussions leading up to the session.
So both Regent Ewing required electronic submissions and also requested in face-to-face conversations? We do both?
That is available to you. It's already our case.
Absolutely.
Because everybody else is arguing.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Great question.
Yes, and we've also had staff from House Ways and Means and Senate Finance attend a majority of our site visits, so they were represented on that front as well.
That's very helpful.
Thank you very much, Chris. I believe we're going to move on now to academic and student affairs, unless you have another item, Chris.
That's it.
Dr. Tristan Denly, our Deputy Commissioner of Academic Affairs and Innovation, will present on these items. Our first item is the consent agenda. Dr. Denly, the floor is yours.
Thanks, sir.
Sir.
So today, we have just, on the consent agenda, some routine staff approvals of some name changes for some degree programs, and then also one program termination. And so senior staff recommend approval of those items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Members, you've heard this recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Regent Seal, Regent Perez, any discussion or any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying nay? Hearing none, the motion passes. And the next item is academic programs. Dr. Finley, please proceed.
Thank you. So we have a one-degree program to present to you today. So this is a PhD in pathology and translational pathobiology at LSU Health Science Center in Shreveport. So this is really a, I think, a wonderful new program, which will be unique in the, in the public institutions in the state, that really will prepare students to, to explain the mechanisms of human disease, to understand what those mechanisms are, and then also to understand how to translate those mechanisms into research and clinically relevant applications, and also to communicate that scientific information effectively across stakeholder communities. So this is really, I think, a fundamental building block program for our health research across the state, and certainly senior staff recommend. across the state, and certainly senior staff recommend the approval of this program.
Thank you very much. Members, senior staff, you've heard the recommendation by senior staff to approve. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Have a question first.
Yes, please. A question from Regent Seal.
What is translational pathobiology?
Yeah, so I am a mere mathematician, so I will do my, my best to try to, try to explain that, and I know there are probably people in the room who can do it better than I can. So this, this translational piece is exactly this, as far as I understand it, the, the movement from the, the understandings of, of disease mechanism into now being able to apply those understandings in a clinical setting, in an application setting, treatment setting, and also in the setting of being able to, to communicate those findings across, across the community, across stakeholders. And so it's, it's that, it's that translation of pure science into practical science. And as you might imagine, that's, that's a really important piece of what it is that we all have to do on a daily basis, so it's, it's sort of feel good that there are people who will be able to understand how to do that well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question.
Yes.
Any other questions, members, on this item? Not, can I get a motion to approve it, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Regent Perez, and Regent Ewing, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying nay? All right, motion passes. And our next item are the centers and institutes. Dr. Denly, please.
Thank you. Yes, so this is the, presenting today, a new institute in gerontology education research at University of Louisiana Monroe. Just to clarify for members, so the, the board has granted authority to staff to approve continuing authority, authorization of existing research centers and institutes, but when we, whenever some, a new, a new institute comes along, then we need to bring that to you for, for your approval. So this is a new institute there at the University of Louisiana Monroe. It is an institute that will focus on really the research, education, and, and really understanding all of the aspects of aging, gerontology. And so studying the social, cultural, psychological, cognitive, and biological aspects of aging. And I, I'll tell you, certainly as, as the days go by, I get more and more interested in those, and I'm sure others do share that, share that interest. Of course, and there goes without saying, that Louisiana Monroe has many existing academic programs that already pertain exactly to the, to those topics, and so they have a strong background in exactly those things. This institute will then really create a forum to bring and knit together the existing work which is happening on that campus and the work of faculty who are already there. The, the expense is primarily in, in salary support, and so that initial salary support for the, the creation of this institute will be funded through existing institutional resources, but they are already at work to try to establish other funds to, to expand the institute, so...
Just a quick question. Is the institute a place? Are they going to dedicate a building? Are they looking for philanthropic support? What does that, what do we think that will look like?
I think, I think it will, it will grow into that. So initially, this is really about creating a, I mean, a space on campus where faculty who are from a variety of different disciplines can come together to, to do that work together. This is a natural place, for instance, when, when multidisciplinary research applications might, might be put together for that to come from an institute of gerontology, other than disparate faculty across an institute, there's advantages to that. I'm sure as time goes on and the activities of the institute grow, that might well move into initially a dedicated space and perhaps eventually a dedicated building, but initially, this is about trying to knit together activities that are
Thank you.
happening on that campus. And you'll see that reflected in the proposed, proposed budget. Initially, it's just really about faculty salary and not, they're not proposing building a new building or something.
Thank you, Dr. Finley. Members, is there a motion to authorize the Institute of Gerontology Education Research and Training?
So moved.
Moved by Regent Ewing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Regent Finley. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, this motion passes. And the next item is reports, including the Governor's Military and Veteran Friendly Campus Annual Report and the TOPS Annual Report. Dr. Denly, please proceed.
Thank you. Yes, so first of all, the Governor's Military and Veteran Friendly Campus Annual Report. So this is, this is really, every year, we bring to you a report around legislation some time ago to, to create this, sorry, this designation of a military and veteran, veteran-friendly campus. This enables us to engage with campuses, to ask them to, to create initiatives, to create ways in which they can specifically address military and veteran population on their campus. So the kinds of activities we're talking about are waiving application fees, creating specifically targeted orientation experiences for veteran students, allowing veteran students' priority scheduling for their classes on their campus, and then lastly, to, to really double down on the transfer and articulation process. I know we're all familiar with military students who come to campus and as part of their military experience have been through various different kinds of educational experiences. Organizations like the ACE have certainly for a long time recognized those experiences as being valuable educational experiences and consequently recommend that those experiences have carry transfer credit. Earlier in the year, this body approved a new credit for prior learning policy which pertains exactly to enabling campuses to, in a more setting, enable credit for prior learning applies particularly here. So that's the idea around recognizing this designation. What I'm happy to tell you is that for the, the third year in a row, all twenty-eight public post-secondary undergraduate granting institutions in our state have earned that Governor's Military and Veteran, Veteran Friendly Campus designation. And so I bring to you that recommendation to accept that and for us to be able to communicate that to the governor's office.
Thank you, Tristan. Members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Regent Finley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Regent Perez. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. And Dr. Denly, you may continue with the TOPS Annual Report.
Thank you. And again, I know members are familiar with our annual reporting around TOPS. What I want, clearly, this is a substantial report, and so I want to spend some time just to highlight some particular features of that, that report. First of all, making sure that members are aware of some movement around TOPS eligibility in this state. This, this was actually approved some years ago, but was deferred, was deferred because of COVID. But in this, in this, this, beginning in this academic year, the performance and honors GPA requirements moved, moved from being a three, three point oh and three point two five to respectively three point two five and three point five. So that, as I say, this was approved by the legislature back, I believe, in 2019, but was deferred while we went through COVID. This is the first year that this has been, been in practice. It, it is the case, and there are plenty of charts in your packet to, to demonstrate this, that students who are recipients of the TOPS funding, of the TOPS scholarship certainly do outperform their non-TOPS colleagues. And so you can see that reflected in their graduation rates, both at the four-year and at the six-year and at, at every level. And it certainly is also the case that students who receive each of the levels of TOPS, performance, honors, and opportunity, the, the higher the award level, those students certainly are graduating at higher rates. And certainly, it is clear that this is a tool for us to be able to retain the best and brightest across our state, and that's certainly a terrific feature. What is perhaps a change is that for the first year, and you've, you've seen and talked about now at several different meetings in various different guises, for the first year, the number of students in our state who are funded by TOPS has decreased. You can see it there on the chart, just right at the very end, that, you know, the, there's a long, long sequence of increasing, and now sort of, you know, that we've tipped over at the end. What I think is
Go ahead.
What I think is surprising, at least, I think perhaps surprising for some, some members, is that this is not, this is not a new trend. This is suddenly, suddenly the beginning of the, the beginning of the visible effect of a longstanding trend. And that's what I want to spend a few minutes talking about.
When I went through the materials, I had a lot of questions
Yes.
about this particular page, but I'll hold them until
Okay. Hopefully, I can
Thank you.
So you can see, beginning in 2018, in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, there has successively been declining numbers of new students beginning to receive the TOPS award. And so this, this, this change in trend is really the sort of the gradually, you know, year after year after year, an incoming class being slightly smaller than the previous year, being slightly smaller than the previous year, it takes time for that, for that pattern to work its way through the system. And so this is the beginning, this, now you can finally see that, that trend that's actually been around for five, for, for five years. Now, that you see, year over year, the incoming class, the orange bars, are successively shorter and shorter and shorter than the year before. I want to talk about what it is that we understand about the cause of that, and certainly what we perhaps understand less, but want to understand more. So first of all, the blue bars. The blue bars are the students who are eligible for TOPS, who are eligible for TOPS. And you can see that successively, year after year, the number of students who are in that graduating high school class who have been eligible for TOPS has gradually been growing shorter and shorter and shorter. This is not due to the size of the graduating class itself. The sizes of the graduating classes vary a little, but not, not in, not in this kind of pattern. They kind of go up and down relatively, relatively flat. Instead, the underlying feature is a change in eligibility based on ACT score. My suspicion is, you may well have seen in the national press over the last few days, that the ACT has said that this year's, this year's ACT class had a very different distribution from previous years. What I can tell you is that what has been felt nationally has also been felt here in Louisiana. So what I'm showing you here is actually, this is ACT's data, this is ACT's data for Louisiana, and what you can see here is, and again, I think that the print is maybe small, certainly on there, but maybe in your report, not so much, you want to focus on those first two columns. Focus on those first, or sorry, the first two columns, the last, the last, so the last four columns, you can focus on both. If you add together those proportions of students who are in those first two columns, and then in the left-hand chart, and you add together those proportions of students who are in the first two columns on the right-hand chart, you can see they differ, they differ by a good eight or nine percentage points. That's the proportion of students who are not eligible for the TOPS award because of their ACT score. To get, to get the TOPS award, they have to have an ACT of at least twenty. In other words, be in one of those columns, one of those final four columns. And so you can see between 2018, and I didn't show you all the intervening charts, but they all, you can imagine, gradually more, gradually, year over year, a larger proportion of students here in Louisiana, and actually nationwide, have been achieving those lower scores on the ACT, and so consequently are not, not eligible for a TOPS award here in this state. I don't know whether that answers some of the questions you've had.
Sorry.
Okay, keep going. The, the other piece of this is not only is it the case that, not only is it the case that the number of eligible students has been declining, but all those who are eligible, a shrinking proportion of students who are eligible but choose to receive the award, the award has been declining. So I can show you that here again, there's a lot of data on this table, but you can see, I think, over the last decade at least, there has been a steady decline, steady decline from about ninety percent of the students who were eligible for the award and choosing to receive it, down to right at eighty percent of the students who, this year, eighty percent of the students who are eligible to receive the award but choose to receive it. This is significant change in behavior, and this, I think, as you might imagine, deserves a significant amount of understanding to understand why it is that our students are making a different decision. They are, it's a, it's a significant and substantial award to support their higher education life, and yet, for whatever reason, are choosing not to take that award and do something else instead.
Has the award is impacted by the ACT scores?
Yes.
Are we looking at data that shows the validity of utilizing such a score in determining TOPS eligibility?
So there has been very significant national research over the last four to five years at least around trying to understand how it is that, what kind of measure the ACT score is. I think what, what is, there is much, there's much to think about there. One of the things which is, I think, indisputable is that students are able to score a better score on the ACT if they're able to take it more than once, and students are able to score a better score on the ACT if they are able to receive specific coaching, training, preparation for the ACT test. This is perhaps not, it's, it's not, it's not, not, let's say, brain science or rocket surgery or whatever.
Rocket science. Rocket science.
Well, I was trying to deliberately
But, but especially in terms of how we know that
Yes.
and the way it impacts the underserved population.
Well, I think you're exactly right. And there's, you know, and in, you know, in, in many ways, I, you know, the, the actions of this body in recent times to be able to recognize ways in which we can adjust our admission policy in ways that don't, don't negate the effects of the ACT, but don't make it a singular path into higher education, I think is a reflection of the fact that we, we do in fact recognize that it says something about someone's preparation, but doesn't say everything. It is, I think, reasonable to imagine that if someone does have a strong score on the ACT, then it, it is an indication of the fact that they do in fact have some level of preparation, and that's an encouraging factor. What I think is also fairly clear is that in and of itself, having a low score on the ACT is not an indication of the fact that you couldn't have a better score if you had an opportunity to perhaps demonstrate in other ways. So I, I think your, your point is right.
Thank you.
Tristan, can you remind us where the criteria is set? Is it set in statute? Is it set by this board?
It is set in statute, yes. And as you can see, you know, that it is the case that the overall, the, the overall proportion has been declining, but actually, in each particular band, the proportions have been declining. I think it's actually quite striking that the, you can see that the, the proportion of students who earn the, the TOP award, the honors award, has been declining just as precipitously as, as others too. I think, so there is, so there's a lot for us to understand as to why it is that these are students who are eligible for an award and yet are choosing to do something else and to not receive those funds. Want to understand that, we also need to understand that broader trend as to why it is that fewer students are in fact eligible at all. As I say, this is not unique to Louisiana, but you're, if what you're thinking is, well, if I wanted to, if I looked more deeply into that data and disaggregated to see where, where are the greatest declines, if you're thinking, well, the greatest declines are students of color and students of poverty, then you would be right, because that's the place where the student is.
And is there data to show what they're doing instead? Is there any organization working to capture that?
So that's much harder to do. We, we certainly are looking to see, one, one of the questions we want to answer is, are students going elsewhere? And I know right now, we are working with the National Clearinghouse to try to understand, well, did they, did they choose to go to college, just not choose to go to college with us? We, we are, you know, actually, the, the birth rate trends here in Louisiana are different from many other states that surround us, for whatever reason. You know, I think we talked a lot about Nathan Brawls' so-called population cliff. At some point, the number of high school graduates declined steeply. That trend is already really present in other states that are around us, and other states across the nation. We, we don't face that for another few years, not until actually until 2026. But that doesn't stop other states wanting to try to recruit the students that we have to them, and sure enough, making perhaps lucrative packages to say, well, why don't you come study with us? We would love to have you. It may be that some of that is what it is that we're seeing. It may be that students are making decisions in other ways. I know Lawson has certainly, Karen I know Lawson has certainly carried out focus groups with students to try to understand what is their motivation, what are their ideas. We actually have a substantial academic mindset survey in the field right now, to ask our students how they understand themselves as learners and identify with the learning environment around them. So there's other ways we're trying to understand, not in the just voting in your feet kind of way, but perhaps to try to understand, you know, getting under the hood, to understand what are people's motivations to, to go to succeed in college.
Is there any correlation between the decline in the TOPS participants and the decline, or is there a decline overall of all the universities as well? It's about a 2% decline here. Do we have that similar decline overall in the student population?
So you're right, there is overall a decline in the student population.
Is it consistent with this number?
It is broadly, it is broadly consistent with this number, but as to whether or not the, whether or not the same mechanisms are, are controlling this, I think it's premature to say.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just wondered if, if less students meant less application, but what we show is, we actually have a fewer application for the amount of money that we have, that they just not pick them up. And I think following that, where did, where did they go? Because if they were top students, they went somewhere, I believe. And I'm afraid they went to Arkansas and Alabama and Georgia.
Well, soon we will have this data from the National Clearinghouse to know.
They offer tremendous, they offer tremendous incentives. They offer tremendous incentives at those, for those top students. In those schools, they are offering tremendous incentives. I don't think we're doing that here that matches the incentives that they get free ride in some places for those that hit that 30 and 31.
It is a competitive market. I mean, the, the reality is, it is a competitive market across higher education in general for, these are well, these are very well-qualified students, and so are attracted to them.
The whole country's looking for talent at all levels.
That's right.
I mean, I mean, that's what we've been talking about in most of these meetings, and certainly yesterday. Where is the talent going to come from to operate our economy, to make our economy function? And this is just one level of it.
That's right.
We're also talking about diesel mechanics and service industry, and nurses and everything else. And I just wonder, this just seems to fit with a trend. It's unfortunate, but I don't see an inconsistency here with what's going on in every other level of employment or attainment or pursuit.
And, and if we could, for me, it would be beneficial to understand whether facing TOPS eligibility on, partially on, on a test score versus GPA. There's so many of the nation's finest higher educational institutions are now looking at GPA versus a national test score. They're looking at the student more holistically, right? And for us, when you do not score well on the ACT, and you're ineligible, it would be interesting to find out, it would be, it would be good to find out how much of a deterrent that actually is.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Listen, did you say the drop was in students of color and what was the other subset?
Poor students, students, yeah.
Family income.
Have qualified and pretty tops and not choosing not to use it.
So if I go back to the, we go back to this, this ACT distribution, what I was referring to was the changes in the ACT distribution. If you look at those, those two ACT distributions, you can see that there are, there's a larger proportion of students scoring lower scores in the right-hand chart than in the left-hand chart. And those, those trends are more pronounced for, for African-American students and for students whose family, family income is lower. It's less pronounced. It's not, it's not absent, but it is less pronounced for students who come from, 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 from more African families.
Do we have a feel for how much help a student gets in preparing for the ACT? I know there are courses offered and people, and youngsters can take them, that take the test two or three times until they finally hit bingo. But do the, do our average high schools offer that kind of support for all of our students? Because it seems to me that that would be equal help that is needed, because that's a big test, it's intimidating, and if you don't have an opportunity to kind of be schooled on that, you're not going to do as well as somebody that's gone and had lessons and learned how to take the test, sometimes two or three times.
I mean, it's really like any other, it's like any other endeavor. If you are more prepared and have more opportunities, then more than likely, you're going to be able to perform in a better way, or perhaps represent yourself in a better way than someone who is less well-prepared and has less opportunities to do.
Well, is that a BESSE responsibility, or is that a Board of Regents responsibility to try to encourage the, the funding or the practice of helping youngsters that say, I want to go to college, two-year, four-year, whatever, to help them take the ACT so more of them might qualify, particularly those that maybe, if we call it underserved? It seems like that, that would be a worthwhile thing to do. I just wonder if anybody else thinks that's a really worthwhile thing to do. But if a child is, if a child is more able to walk in and take that test, they're going to give you a better score. And I don't know that everybody's getting the same attention that, that some are.
So Regent Ewing, thank you so much for, for those comments. I would say, in Louisiana, all students are taking the ACT, and so the idea of access to the exam exists. But you're absolutely right, the level of preparation, the, the ACT, the pre-ACT testing, the practice, the multiple taking, taking the exam multiple times, that is where you see the gap. And when you look at the data from the ACT over time, every single year, the kids who've taken it more than once, their scores are obviously going up, right? They have that opportunity to get familiar, as you said, they have more confidence in the exam, they understand the importance of the exam, and so that's where the gap is. The, the students have access, and I think ACT, Sue one can correct me, is now providing waivers for students and for schools, and so Losfa has waiver access as well. So students have the ability to take it multiple times if they don't have the, the means financially to do so. But who is safe to the student? You know what, Gary? If you take this test multiple times, you'll get better, and here's a test prep workbook, and come to the class, and let's talk about what's on the ACT, and let's talk about time management, so, because it's a timed test. Those are the things that help the student to move forward, and that's where the gaps are.
Which would go back to guidance counselors.
Guidance counselors, teachers, parents, you know, all of those trusted sources sharing that important information.
So part of what the test is measuring is parenting and guidance available to the student?
The ability to, to navigate a test.
And the ability to afford taking it.
Yes, more than once.
More than once.
Yeah.
Certainly, it is an encouraging trend that more often the ACT is now being offered as part of the school day, as opposed to at some other time of the day. Clearly, that's not the only time it's offered, but certainly that is in and of itself an important change in the way in which the ACT is offered. I think it's, it's easy to imagine that there are students who might well be able to access the test when it's within the school day, but when it's offered outside school time. That in and of itself can be a significant barrier. Transport, time, resources, all of those come into, come into effect.
I wonder if that could be folded into the dual enrollment, because you've already got the people that are planning on continuing their education, and you've got them connected with teachers and counselors, hopefully. And I wonder if that could be folded into that to en, to enhance their ability to take that test. I mean, it's almost like shooting a basketball goal. The more you shoot it, the more you're going to make it. And it just seems like to me, you've got the population there in dual enrollment, and you've got the structure, and maybe that could be where the support and help could come from for students.
Regent Ewing, I believe that Dr. Williams has a comment on this.
Yeah, I want to add to Mr. Ewing's comment, but to expand it a little bit further, to not just do it in dual enrollment, but to expand the ability to have more early college academies on the two-year campuses with articulation agreements in place, that these students would receive ACT prep as well as a regular curriculum program. So when they're leaving that two-year school, they're going to the school of choice, be it Southern UL, LSU, but they've been placed on a track from high school, ACT prep, but also able to gain either industry-based credentials as well as high, college course credit to be able to go and be a successful student once they get on campus. Because many students are not successful test takers, but they're successful students in the end. So maybe even expanded dual enrollment to add more early college academies and articulation agreements between community and technical colleges and four-year systems. I know I'm wearing two hats, so let me, let me do this. So increasing one to be able to go to the other, but will put them on a better pathway. And then what it does is, it increases the student's belief in their, in their selves, because parenting and guidance counseling is one thing, but fear of test-taking, that's something that you can't take from that student unless you encourage them. So if we put, put together a plan, and then there's more, like I said, articulation agreements between two and four-year, creating a pathway with early college academy that student is prepared not only for coursework, but to take that ACT and get a successful score.
It's a continuum.
Yes.
And of course, when it comes to admissions, this body has very much moved in that direction, and they have recognized through the college as in and of itself, a demonstration of college readiness.
I won't ask you more. Everybody ready to go home?
Regent Librae.
I will say, test-taking anxiety is very real. I suffer from it pretty bad, especially when I have to take a really intense math test. But I know sometimes changing like your atmosphere, I know whenever I get to take tests at home and they do the camera and they watch us, it helps with that a little bit, just being in a place where I feel comfortable versus going to a play, a room maybe that I haven't been to if I'm taking an online class, sitting there with a bunch of people I don't know, and maybe my pencil breaks, you know, you think of these things, it runs through your mind, your pencil breaks, you can't get up for a new pencil. Should I ask for a pencil? I'm not sure. And you just start sweating, and you start getting hot, and all things, next thing you know, 30 minutes have gone by, and you haven't answered a single question on your test. So some of these things are very, very real, but I, I really like how you're talking about this, thinking about, because whenever I was in high school, I had a really hard time with tests. I was, you wouldn't believe it now, but I was a really big CD student. I did not make very good grades in high school, and I did not make, I don't even want to, it's embarrassing how low my ACT, SCT, whatever, the score, the test I had to take was, it was very low. I just, I didn't, I didn't have time to study for it, I didn't know about studying for it, I didn't know what it really did. I didn't know that it was that important to getting into a four-year. At the time, I didn't know if I was going to be able to afford a four-year college in the first place, that's why I kind of leaned towards technical school. But I think being able to have those resources in high school would be very beneficial to students, because some people just don't know they exist. I know a lot of students, my peers, they had paid for testing, and I didn't know if there was any free testing, and I didn't know where to find it, if there was any at the time. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Regent Librae, for those comments.
Thank you. Fascinating discussion today.
Commissioner, can I ask, this board and this staff has demonstrated a willingness to contend with reimagining entry requirements, with reimagining how we invest and where we put our priorities. And inasmuch as this is a program that's dictated by statute, is there more that this board and that this staff could do to frame up what TOPS for the future should look like to best serve the states, the, the students of the future in this state? Especially in light of the upcoming political climate that will be changing with who's in the governor's office and, and many other seats of importance, I think it's, I would suggest that it's important that this board have a point of view about what we would expect of our future leaders and how we expect them to support our students in the future. And TOPS is one of the greatest investments that we make.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Acting Chair. Great, this has been a great conversation. Yes, it is certainly sits in our lap to talk about and envision TOPS for the future. If you look at the legislation over time, you see that there was an interest in additional access, keeping our best and brightest. Then the legislature decided to cap the amount of TOPS to try to cost contain, I'm looking at certain amount, cost contain, but still meet some commitment to students. And so there's sort of been fits and starts, one year where there was not increased funding for TOPS, the last year, as we mentioned, the first year, we didn't ask for an increase. So I do think it's important for us as a policy board to lean into where we see affordability and access. How do we think about keeping our best and brightest? It is an interesting question to see so much conversation about affordability and debt avoidance, and yet to see a program that is free tuition and have a decline, and a decline in individuals who are accepting, says there's a there, there. There's no way in a, in a state, in a nation that has this much conversation around affordability, that you would expect to see less students eligible accepting, unless to Regent's Ewing's point, we're being outcompeted by other states. So we'll know more when we do the National Clearinghouse study, but we also will have an opportunity to, Regent Solomon's point, to ask the question, how do you demonstrate that you are meritorious in Louisiana? And what should that demonstration be, knowing that the social determinants of health and wellness sit right squarely in increased educational attainment? So those are the tough questions that we, as this board, have to wrestle with for sure. Regent Pryor asked the question about minority students and lower-income students. You think about the last multiple years in our state, multiple hurricanes, a pandemic. So always when there's a disaster, those individuals who have the wherewithal sustain themselves, and those individuals who do not fall back even further and have a harder time moving forward. So there is, there are some things that we have a question mark about, and there are some things that are exactly, unfortunately, what we thought we would see in terms of the impact, but we do have bigger questions to answer, and we're looking forward to those discussions. Regent Pryor? Okay.
To, to pivot, keeping TOPS, even once you have this award, then you have to continue to make good progress towards your degree. One of the things that certainly stuck out to me was, the most prevalent way to lose the award is, is all about accumulation of credit. Students in their first year have to accumulate at least 24 hours of college credit with a particular GPA. Not meeting that benchmark is the most, the most prevalent way to actually lose your eligibility for the TOPS award. Again, this links up very much with the strategies that we are looking to do as part of the momentum framework, to, to enable more students more often to be able to avail themselves of a fuller schedule across a full academic year. This is not just saying, look, everybody should take 15 hours, there you go. This is recognizing we have a whole year, we need to be able to, in the kinds of ways that you heard this morning from Delgado, to be able to recognize that there are a wide variety of ways in which we can enable more students to be able to enroll in a fuller schedule across their full academic year. Because otherwise, if they are only able to take 24 hours, everything has to fall in place just perfect to make sure that they retain that eligibility. We need to recognize that humans are fallible, we all are, and sometimes things don't go exactly to plan. So again, fits very nicely with the work that we are doing. I, I will make the comment that, as you look through your report, there was a change in legislation this year to, that we should not include a report that, that analyzed the impact of family income on eligibility for TOPS and acceptance of the TOPS award. It is the case that we gathered that data, we certainly have analyzed that data, the, the past patterns are effectively the same trends that you have seen year over year, so there is, there's nothing new to see there. The, the trends you've seen in the past continue into this year as well, but I certainly wanted to recognize that if you were expecting to see that, that data shared in the report this year, that's the reason why it has been not included this year. And so with all of that, senior staff recommend that the board approve the TOPS report and authorize the, the commissioner to submit the report to the appropriate legislative committees on behalf of the Board of Regents.
Thank you, Dr. Denly, and thank you, members, for the discussion around this important item. Is there a motion to approve this item?
No.
Moved by Regent Perez. Moved by Regent Perez, second by Regent David. Any further discussion or questions? Not all, please, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. Moving now to item five, policies, specifically cleanup revisions to the statewide minimum admission standards. Dr. Denly, please proceed.
Thank you. Yes, so I guess this is, easiest way to explain this, this is chapter three of our discussion around admission, and in many ways really does continue with this discussion. The two pieces that I want to bring to you today really, in many ways, continue the conversation that we've already had. The first, in many ways, allows us to be more competitive in being able to recruit other states' best and brightest students to our state. In the past, we have had a provision in our admission criteria that if a student in another state does not, because they took their high school curriculum in their state, and they don't have all of the 19 units that we have in our state, if they meet both the ACT and GPA requirement for the school that they would like to go to, then they are able to use that for admittance purposes, to be eligibility in our admission criteria. You will remember that, you know, in the past, there were two pathways. There was the ACT or the GPA, and for these students, then it becomes an and statement, ACT and GPA. Now that we have three pathways, we have ACT, we have GPA, and we also have the early college, it seems as though it's very much in keeping with that to now say, in the past, you had to have ACT and GPA. Our suggestion is that we allow students to demonstrate two out of the three if they are in another state and fall into this particular category. As I say, these are well-qualified students. This is not about us in any way diminishing standards, but it's really recognizing we have that new pathway. And so we would be, in your materials, it's that little green square in the big chart that says, so rather than just saying you have to have the ACT and the GPA, we're now opening the possibility to have the ACT and the GPA, or the ACT and the high school, early college, or the early college and the ACT, any of those, the two out of the three would do. So as I say, this is about us enabling our campuses to be more competitive in recruiting from across the nation. The second requirement is really, again, recognizing the changes that you've made in our prerequisite remediation needs. In the past, our regional institutions have had the ability to admit students who had two prerequisite placements, provided one of those scores was close to the cut. Not two that are far away, but one that's perhaps far away, but at least one of them has to be close. The way in which that close has been measured is all about ACT score. So in other words, saying, okay, is your ACT one slot, but oh, two slots below. Again, it's been very much in keeping of the action of this board recently to move to a multiple measures approach, to say, well, yes, if you have ACT score, of course, we will consider it, but it's not the only way in which you can demonstrate your ability to do that work. And so we will consider other elements of your academic record. This, again, is recognizing that in policy, that now allowing regional institutions to admit students to their campus if they have two developmental placements, provided one of those placements is close to the cut. And that close is measured by a multitude of different measures, ACT, ACT, acupressure, acupressure, LEAP, Alex scores, all of the kinds of national multiple measures which are the standards today. Yes, ma'am?
So who will have the ability to discern the discretion on what you just described?
So there is, in fact, no discretion. So it's actually, those threshold scores are a part of what you would enact today. They're in policy 2.18.
I thought those were called exceptions.
So no, these would not be exceptions. These would be, so in the existing policy for regional institutions, if they have a student who is, who has two developmental placements, one of which is close, then they can, not as an exception, admit that student, so not as an exception, as a regular admit. And what we would be doing here is to say, you can continue to do that, but the idea of close is not just about the ACT. It could be about your Alex score, or your acupressure score, or your LEAP score, or any of the, any of a variety of different academic metrics.
Be the difference in the core and what would be accepted under this proposal?
For the out-of-state students?
Yeah.
Yes, I can. So a good example is, I think, the state of California. So in the state of California, they have 15 units in their core that is required by the state for admission to college.
So we would accept their standards?
So we would accept those 15, but we would, we allow our campuses to go into that student's academic record and to find four other pre-college prep kinds of courses to make up the full 19.
To make up the complement of 19, okay.
So now, we're still comparing, you know, 19 to 19, but now we allow those students to then be admitted in the regular way. Yeah, that's, I think, the easiest example to answer.
If the institution certifies that there are additional
Yes, ma'am.
Four, it could be three, it could be two additional core units, academic courses that they believe meet that requirement.
And they have to record that, and they allow, they make them available to us, and they're part of the audit process. It's, yeah, absolutely. This has been, that methodology has been a longstanding process. It's not
Currently, what would happen without this change in place?
So in the particular, if we did not enact this particular place, then actually, what would happen is that that student in California would have to earn an ACT score which is three points higher than their colleagues in other states, because their 15 units could not be topped all the way up to 19.
So they'd have to sort of test out of their own California curriculum to get qualified for entry here?
Effectively so, that's right.
Thank you, Dr. Denly. Members, you've heard the recommendation of Dr. Denly. Is there a motion to approve these items?
A motion.
Moved by Regent Perez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Regent Seal. Any discussion or further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes.
Thank you. Just as a point of personal privilege, I do want to say a very big thank you to all of the chief academic officers and system presidents who have been involved in these changes in admission over the last, is it only months, or maybe it's years? But it has been, I think, a very valuable experience for us to talk through those things. And I think the policies that we have, I hope you agree, really position us in ways that are very advantageous. But I do want to thank them very much for all of their patience and hard work as we do on this work.
And thank you for continuing to convene them and ensure that there's alignment on these important matters.
Thank you. So the last item today is actually, I mean, this is a joyful thing for me to be able to present to you.
There's math in it.
Yeah, exactly, because they have math in it. But, you know, to position this, really, over the last, maybe over the last half a dozen years or so, there, and really, that's where it's really come together, but it's really been about 20 years in the making, really recognizing that where in the past, students who went to college, they learned one kind of math. They learned, and it was called, as the name might suggest, college algebra, because what else would you learn in college? Really recognizing that that thinking just doesn't hold water when it comes to mathematics as a discipline. That, yes, it is the case that the algebra that you learn in college algebra has a value. The value is really about learning the algebra that you need for calculus. So if you're in a calculus-based discipline, college algebra is terrific. The thing is that there are lots of disciplines that are not calculus-based. We just approved one today. Pathology and translational pathobiology, this is not a calculus-based discipline. And so there are many, many disciplines across the academic endeavor that simply are not based on calculus, but are based on all kinds of other mathematics. And it is important as mathematicians for us to recognize that we want people to have the mathematical training that they need to be successful in their discipline. So about now, about four years ago, the Collegiate Board of Mathematical Studies, CBMS, which is the overarching, overarching national organization that oversees all 17 national math associations, they came out with a position statement which said exactly that, that says that students in college should learn the mathematics that is pertinent to their discipline, and that that is college algebra, if they are in a broadly speaking calculus-based discipline, but it is other mathematics if they are in other disciplines. We, as a mathematics community here in the state of Louisiana, up until now, had not chimed in to say amen, so to say. But over this, over these last few months, I've actually been convening with a working group of faculty and department chairs of mathematics across our state, and they are listed on your screen today and in your report. And I, again, want to very much thank them for their willingness to take their time to be involved in this. And they, together, have crafted a Louisiana Math Pathways Position Statement, which, again, is in your materials. And it's a little lengthy, but I think it's maybe worthy of my reading today to say, in keeping with the positions of the American Math Society, AMATIC, the two-year colleges, and ASA, the American Statistical Association, MAA, the Mathematic Association of America, and SIAM, and the collective position of the Conference Board of Mathematical Sciences. So really aligning us with the national viewpoint of professional mathematicians. The Louisiana Board of Regents Math Pathways Working Group affirms that students should follow a mathematics pathway that contains the mathematics that pertains to their discipline of study, their career goals, and their personal and civic lives. In particular, college algebra is only one of multiple gateway mathematics courses, options that satisfy the general education analytical reasoning requirement. This has been our position here in this state for about 20 years. Degree programs should incorporate the mathematics courses that follow a disciplined, appropriate mathematics pathway to meet these requirements. Discipline pathways might include a statistics pathway for students pursuing social health and data sciences, a quantitative reasoning literacy pathway tailored to humanities, or an algebra-intensive pathway in which college algebra plays an integral role for students majoring in science, technology, engineering, and STEM, and other calculus-based disciplines. To operationalize this goal, the math community will collaborate with partner disciplines to identify clusters of disciplines with common math needs and develop additional mathematics pathways, or modify existing pathways to best meet those needs. Regardless of which pathway the student follows, they should begin their mathematics pathway in their first year of study, and whenever possible, each institution should offer the gateway course for each pathway pertaining to the degree offerings in a prerequisite format, together with the appropriate supports to enable student success. So I really think, you know, I really want to recognize, as I say, the work of this group, and to tell you how important it is that our mathematics community has moved in this direction. The statement that I'm communicating to you today does not require your action, but I did want to present it to you. It is a really important piece of really positioning mathematics education in a modern world, in a modern way, to meet the curricular needs of our students and their success. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think this is the end of my items.
All right. It was a marathon for you today, Dr. Denly. Thank you very much for all these items. Regent Perez?
I applaud these, I applaud these efforts. I think they're significant in terms of assuring that students, we're looking at students holistically within their fields of study, right? Does this, though, also include financial literacy?
Yeah, so it opens the door, exactly, to creating mathematics programs that really do undergird a full understanding of the, really a full understanding of the mathematics, the flexibility of mathematics across the curricular life. This group has already committed, in fact, to coming together and collectively creating two new mathematics general education courses, one in data science, and then one which we, a second semester course in statistical reasoning. I don't think those are the end of what they will do, but certainly they are an important beginning of what they will do.
Right, thank you.
No, thank you.
I do think that, to Regent Perez's point, when you say right math for right discipline, not cookie cutter approach, everybody college algebra, get on board or not, you know, but right math for right discipline, then the light bulb can go on to Regent Seal's point, right? Take the math, it is aligned with what your aptitude and interest is, that is aligned to your field of study.
That's right. And of course, this perfectly positions us now to have those conversations with those disciplines. Of course, it's presumptuous for the mathematics community to say, well, and we know which one the right one is. No, but now it allows us to engage those disciplines and say, okay, the math community thinks we should be teaching the right math for your discipline. Which one is that? And are the offerings that we're providing to you, the offerings that really you need to be able to appropriately prepare the students for success in your discipline? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Denly. All right, next up is research and sponsored initiatives. Carrie Robeson, Deputy Commissioner for Sponsored Programs, is going to present on these two items. And the first item up is the Consent Agenda. And Carrie, whenever you're ready, may proceed, please.
Yes, sir. So on the Consent Agenda today, we have one item, which is a request from LSU A&amp;M to divide a support fund matched endowed chair. This endowed chair is the Moyes Chair in Banking, and senior staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Carrie. Members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I guess I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Something brand new for all of my persons, is this the first time we've divided one in the past?
No, we've divided one last month. We've divided them numerous times since about 2012.
I'll make a motion to
Thank you, Regent Ewing. Got a motion from Regent Ewing and a second from Regent Seal. Is there any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next up is the overview of the Board of Regents Support Fund Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 2324.
Yes, sir. I'll note that this item is for information only. This is a preview of what we will bring to you in December for Action, which is the annual budget that we approve for the support fund. This is the 36th year in which the support fund will be making awards this year, so we are approving the budget for our 37th year. We will be looking at that in December. And the support fund, just a reminder, is operated on revenues generated by the Louisiana Education Quality Trust Fund, which is the subject of Constitutional Amendment I, one of the subjects of Constitutional Amendment I. And everything that we do in the support fund is supportive of academics, research, and agricultural activities to improve educational quality in higher education and contribute to Louisiana's economic development. We have two sources of expendable revenue that come into the trust fund, or come in from the trust fund, investment earnings and oil and gas royalties from the sector affected by the settlement, by the oil and gas settlement that created the trust fund. It's important to note that these are the only revenues that come into the support fund. We only receive revenues from the trust fund. There are no additional monies that come in. You will see the average annual revenue over the life of the fund is about almost $26 million, and the total value of the fund is almost $1.7 billion. I wanted to point out the $26 million because what you'll see over the last decade plus is that we have had a big dip in the revenues that are received, and we are now at the lowest point in terms of revenues received since about 1988. What that means is, back when the trust fund was worth $600 million instead of $1.7 billion, we were receiving more money in revenues that we could expend than we are now. With that, we still operate 10 programs through the support fund. These programs run from the Broadest Base, which is our enhancement program. This provides opportunities for all campuses, all levels, all kinds of academic research and agricultural opportunities, and we go up through the specialties. R&amp;D, which is obviously eligible primarily to campuses that do significant research, recruitment of superior graduate students, obviously only for those campuses that have graduate programs, and then endowed chairs, remnant scholars, which are endowment matching for some of the for some of the, the highest profile and most productive senior faculty in the state. In terms of award types, we offer direct support to campuses. This means money that we, we distribute to the campuses, that the campuses expend on immediate priorities, immediate needs. We provide endowment matching, which are matching dollars for funds that are permanently endowed in the state. These are funds that stay permanently in foundations and development offices for investment, and they pay out over time. It's important to note with endowment funds, we are the largest donor in the state. The support fund is the largest single donor to permanent endowments in the state, and a vast majority of all permanently endowed funds in the state are associated with support fund dollars or our support fund dollars themselves. So we cede quite a bit of the permanent endowments throughout the state. And finally, we do federal matching. These are federal programs, usually research, occasionally education, programs that, in which the federal government is investing in our state and requiring that the state provide a match. Most states do this through their legislative processes. We do not, we actually match these through the support fund, which provides a stable and permanent source of funds for campus-based and, and statewide-based federal grants. In terms of our expenditures by program, you'll see that the two biggest pieces of the pie, endowment matching and enhancement, which represents over sixty percent of all the monies we've ever spent, are in the broadest-based programs. The programs that are available to the largest number of campuses for the largest number of academic research and agricultural activities. The other pieces of the pie are somewhat smaller. Federal matching is about ten percent, graduate fellowships about eleven, and R&amp;D at eighteen percent. Why do we do all of this? The benefits are huge to the support fund investments. First, there's the direct return on investment. We know, for example, that our R&amp;D programs generate about $10 in federal and other non-state funding for every dollar that we invest in them. But there are also lots of indirect benefits to our campuses, including support for students, support, support for faculty, for recruitment and retention of, of excellent junior and senior faculty. We lead, we invest in federal competitiveness, not just for statewide federal awards, but also for individual faculty members who are trying to become consistently competitive for federal dollars. We provide academic program support, so people developing new curricula, introducing new equipment, introducing new technologies into their classrooms, we, we have provided significant investments in that. And we have also ceded numerous special projects statewide that you hear a lot about today. We were an initial funding support for Lewis, the library network. We provided significant investment when Lonnie was established in 2005. We funded a $20 million post-Catrina Support Fund Initiative to try to bring back the campuses that were damaged by the 2005 hurricanes, both east and west South Louisiana. So there have been significant benefits gained from the $1.2 billion that the support fund has expended on higher education campuses to date. In terms of budget development, this is the beginning of our process. We will bring, this is part of our advisory process. We bring recommendations to broad-based stakeholder groups. We have two committees that will review these recommendations before they come to you. One of those committees has already done its work. The next committee will meet in November to review these, and then we will bring it to you for formal action, at which point it will go over to the legislature and the governor. It becomes part of House Bill One and goes through the budget process like all of the other funding. Support fund revenues, I want to make sure that you are aware that we are, we are somewhat stable now, but still in a historically low period in terms of revenues produced by the support fund. That spike, those of you who were around last year when we did this, that spike that you see in 2001 is, was artificial. It was caused by sell-offs because the market was hot in 2001, and the treasury is required to stay under the thirty-five percent cap on securities investments. So as the market continued to be hot, treasury sold off that year four times, and that led to that, that very large spike in revenues. We predicted last year that that spike would not be replicated, and indeed, it was not. We received $17 million last year in revenues, which is lower than was projected for the support fund and one of the lowest revenues on record since the inception of the fund. We expect this year, stable funding. That is what we are told to expect by both treasury and REC. For '24, they are only about, well, they're about half a million dollars off in terms of their estimates. Budget considerations, when we develop the budget, we look at several data points, as well as look back over our experience over the last several years. So you see the official state estimate is nineteen point four five. We have a very unusual situation for '24 in which treasury is actually projecting higher than REC at the current moment. That almost never happens, but treasury's estimating twenty point five, so we are fairly comfortable with a base budget of 20 million. But we also look at what we received last year, which was very low. Lots of fiscal uncertainties throughout the program, including interest rate decisions, which we expect to continue to, to cause us difficulties, and Constitutional Amendment One, which you have heard about earlier today, and you will hear about again before I am done. We have a significant buffer from that big spike in '21, so we are confident that the $20 million can be sustained regardless of whether these revenue estimates hold up or not. And for those of you who've been around a while, you know we were in repayment of almost $5 million to the Department of Interior. Those funds have all been repaid, so we are receiving the full amount, though it is very low, of our royalty payments again. This is, you have this in your board materials for the month, but this is just the overview of the budget that the staff has put together and is taking through the stakeholder groups. It is a $20 million base budget. We start with that 20 million base, and the first thing we do is subtract out our prior commitments. Prior commitments are obligations we already have on the books, contracts that exist. Our total obligations this year are 6.8 million, and that's a little bit increased from last year, and that is really the only change from the budget you approved last year. We have a slight increase in prior commitments, which decreases slightly our, our new money available. The administration dollars are taken out next. That's really just, it's a calculation, three percent of the average of the last three years' expenditures. We do currently still have only four and a half employees to administer the total of the support fund, but we have restructured our staff to make it more efficient and more effective at administering these awards, and also to provide more leadership to our endowment programs, which currently have a market value of about, that's very close to the market value of the trust fund. And finally, all the funds that are remaining are spread in new awards. These are funds that will be competitively awarded in fiscal year '24. So what you're looking at today, we won't actually bring these funds to you for expenditure until April of 2024. So this is a long time horizon for the expenditure of the funds that we're looking at today. Contingencies for changes in revenue, we always have to think ahead about what will happen if we make more or make less. If we make more, we are highly conservative in how we treat this. We will bring any recommendations for additional funding to you for approval, but we do not plan on exceeding our spending authority with the legislature. That would require going back to the legislature and getting an increase in spending authority. We don't anticipate doing that just because of all of the uncertainties. If we're lower than budgeted, then we go through stages of taking budget reductions. First, we reduce on a prorata basis all of our competitive programs. Then we reduce the funding guarantees, which are endowed professorships and first-generation scholarships, and only then would we look at reducing any federal matching that we have pledged, or any prior commitments that we have on the books, because those have, are promises that we have made, and so we try to keep those first and foremost. In the history of the support fund, we have never had to do anything more than prorata reductions in new money. Finally, Constitutional Amendment One. All of the uncertainties that we see in the projections for the support fund hinge on what will happen in Constitutional Amendment One, which would allow the treasurer to, the cap is currently thirty-five percent investment in securities for the trust fund. Constitutional Amendment One will provide flexibility to the treasurer, up to sixty-five percent cap on equities investments, to allow the treasurer to, to look at current market conditions and make the best decisions in respect to this fund and several other funds, including the Millennium Trust Fund, a couple of trust funds held by Wildlife and Fisheries, and the Medicaid Trust Fund. If Constitutional Amendment One comes to pass, that's what it adds to the treasurer. It doesn't add anything to the Regents', but it adds flexibility to the treasurer in figuring out the best way to maximize our revenues from the market. Questions?
Any questions for Carrie?
And I will just remind you, you will have another shot at this in December, when we will go through it all with an eye toward Action.
Excellent. Thank you, Carrie.
Yes, sir.
All right, and we are moving along to statewide programs. Dr. Bhouti, Executive Director of Losfa, is going to present this item. And I believe our first item is the Consent Agenda items. Dr. Bhouti, whenever you're ready, floor will be yours.
All right, members, you have pretty routine Consent Agenda items today. The first one is final rulemaking. This adds the dual enrollment psychology course as a TOPS core equivalent, that can be graded on a 5.0 grading scale. By rule, you can determine certain dual enrollment IBAP courses to be graded on a 5.0 scale. This is final rule, which you've already passed initially. The second Consent Agenda item is to add COVID as an objective circumstance, and this is final rulemaking as well, and this extended this through the summer of 2022. I want to make you aware that even though we all know summer of 2022 has passed, we also know that we are having a surge in COVID in Europe, which means we anticipate a surge of COVID in the United States. So if there are COVID exceptions, and the summer of 2022 has passed, students still have a recourse to request that. They can request that through temporary disability, if COVID, if they themselves have COVID, if they have a parent or grandparent or relative that's close to them, that they're caring for that has COVID, they can request that through care of a family member, and if they have something that doesn't fit any of those objective circumstances, they can do an exceptional circumstance, which comes to you. So students still deal, have a recourse. The third Consent Agenda item would be the approval of TOPS exceptions that require students to remain continually enrolled, to enroll full-time, and to complete the 24 hours. This is, so that you'll put that in context, when you looked at the TOPS report and Dr. Denly talked about the fact that students would most commonly lose TOPS because of their inability to complete the 24 hours, you're approving exceptions for that. So a student could get that, but if a student has a reason beyond their control that that didn't happen, there's an exception for that. The only thing there aren't exceptions for is grades. If you don't make your grades, you're suspended, which means we stop paying you until you get it together and bring your grade point average up. When you bring your grade point average up, your award is reinstated, unless you take two full years. If you're a TOPS Opportunity Performance or Honors recipient, and you don't do it then, then that award is permanently canceled, and you would not see that exception. If you're a TOPS Tech recipient, and you take more than a year to bring your grades up, then you're permanently canceled. You would not see an exception for that. So the most common reason students lose TOPS is also a reason that they can get exceptions if they were beyond their control. So these are approval of TOPS exceptions that students have demonstrated that they have reasons beyond their control to justify that exception. And then the last Consent Agenda item is the home study exception. The legislature gave you this authority to be able to grant exceptions to students who had to begin a home study program later than the 10th grade year. Many of you have asked, I think Commissioner, you asked, does that include bullying? Does that include illnesses? Does that include, we have a student that had severe anxiety and depression, and it is getting worse instead of better, so in school, according to her qualified health professional, is not the least restrictive environment for her. It is better for that student to be at home. So these are the types of exceptions that you're approving. You have one exception this month that you're being asked to approve. The Losfa Advisory Board has reviewed each of these Consent Agenda items, and they recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Bhouti. Members, you've heard the recommendation. Can I get a motion to please approve the Consent Agenda items? Regent Sterling, second by Regent Ewing. Any discussion or questions?
Okay, and yeah, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other business, it's okay, we normally don't. But in this one, we wanted to make you aware. I think the last time I made you aware of the fact that there was a growing buzz and concern about students being required to complete the free application for federal student aid, or FAFSA. TOPS, as you know, is a merit-based program. That means that income is not a requirement for attaining TOPS, right? So I can't put you on TOPS because of your income, I can't kick you off of TOPS because of your income, because it is not a need-based program. So parents would ask, well, then why do I need to file the FAFSA to be able to complete TOPS? You have individuals that object to that. Well, what we're trying to do through this campaign is to say, you have two options. If you know that you're going to need federal aid, work-study, Pell Grant, federal student loans, then you have to file the FAFSA. You're not going to get access to that aid if you don't. If you don't file the FAFSA and you're needy, then you don't have a chance of getting GO Grant, and you don't have a chance of getting some other institutional aid. So for those students and families in that situation, yes, they need to file the FAFSA. For a student and family that says, hmm, I'm not interested in any of that, I am only interested in applying for TOPS, those families do not have to file the FAFSA. They may file, and they could always file, the online application for TOPS, and if they file the online application for TOPS, there is no income required. So what we're trying to do here is, you see on the screen is a decision tree that we're putting on our website, out on social media, we're working with parents when they call with questions about this, to just clarify that information. Because what you don't want to have happen is buzz on social media to cause a student that is needy and meritorious to not file the FAFSA, and then forego aid and leave aid on the table that they would have been eligible for. So we're just showing you that those, that campaign is underway, that information is there, and here we're showing you the results of that information. The engagement basically shows you how many interactions we received when we posted that. The reach, the 38,000, shows you how many unique accounts have seen our post, which means people are looking at the post, and then the shares tell you how many have shared that. So this is just a point of information for you as Regents to know, that we are hearing that, responding to it by providing intrusive and intensive advising on, this is the way you determine which of these forms is the best for you to fill out. So it's just a point of other business, no action required.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bhouti. Are there any questions about this item here? All right, Carrie, now, I think we need to go back for a moment and complete the vote on the Consent Agenda items. We had a motion by Regent Sterling, a second by Regent Ewing. I don't believe there was further discussion at the time, we just missed the actual vote. So hearing no other discussion or questions, can we get a vote in favor, I'll say aye, on the Consent Agenda items?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that is officially passed as well. Awesome, thank you, Dr. Bhouti, really appreciate it all. All right, we're going to move on to Deputy Commissioner for Strategic Planning and Student Success, Dr. Susannah Craig, who's going to present for the Planning, Research, and Performance Committee. Dr. Craig, you can proceed with the Consent Agenda.
All right, so this afternoon, we have two, only a Consent Agenda item. We have two programs for licensure. We have a renewal application from Remington College, and then we have a, an initial application for Aspen University, and I wanted to talk with you just a little bit about Aspen. And I wanted to talk with you just a little bit about Aspen. We are recommending that Aspen receive a provisional license for one year. Aspen moved, first of all, we have students in Louisiana who have been students at Aspen University through the NC-SARA agreement, but Aspen moved states to, from Colorado to Arizona, and at this point, Arizona has not approved their NC-SARA license. So we have about, I think, 24, 27 students enrolled at Aspen. And so to give Aspen an opportunity to actually get the information, get their NC-SARA license in place in Arizona, we are recommending a provisional license for one year. They will have to come back to us in a year to, for us to look at them again for actual approval. Courtney Britton has spoken with our counterparts in Arizona, and they, and they believe that this is going to get worked out in Arizona. It's just the timing is such that these students would not be covered. And so I just, the rest of the, the rest of the applications are from our proprietary schools. We have one change of ownership application for Becker Professional Online. We have an initial application for Road Ready Driving Academy, and then we have 27 renewal applications that you see here. And if there are no questions, senior staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Craig and Courtney both. Members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
A motion with Regent Perez, is there a second?
Second.
Second with Regent Seal. Any discussion or questions, members? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you both very much. We're going to move on to Dr. Hunter Reed's reports and recommendations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Acting Chair. Members of the Board of Regents, it has been wonderful to be together here in New Orleans and to get back on the road and see the amazing work happening at Delgado, to see the fantastic hardware at NASA Mischu, and hear directly from tenants about the talent that they need. And certainly, Regent Solomon, thank you for a wonderful evening and for your hospitality, and for a sneak peek at that adorable baby girl. Just could not have a meeting or reception without seeing that sweet baby. So just wanted to say thank you. I know our chancellor is here. Chancellor Larissa, so really much appreciate you. We have a little token for you as well, so I'll pass that on to you shortly. But thank you so much to you and your team. We're just very proud of the work. 100 years of commitment, fantastic. So thank you. So I just want to quickly share a couple of things that we've done since we've been together. We had a wonderful leading ladies luncheon at the governor's mansion. This was an opportunity for us to gather with female SGA presidents, female chancellors and presidents, as well as female superintendents of schools here in Louisiana, to really talk about the path forward in education and to fellowship and network, and it was just wonderful, inspiring discussion. And so I just wanted to mention that and to thank our governor for opening his home for that luncheon. Also want to thank education champion Representative Ken Brass for a fantastic cradle-to-career day in St. James Parish. There were over 100 high school students who are participating in dual enrollment that we had an opportunity to visit with and to share our new early college pathways for admissions. And then there was an opportunity for us to join the representative and the governor in Donaldsonville for the announcement of a corporate donation to open a public early learning center in a historic building on Main Street. And so we're very excited about this cradle-to-career conversation in this particular legislative district and look forward to doing more of that as we advance work. And as we've talked about over the last two days, making sure that students have good information, actionable information about opportunities in our state, so we know that's important as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter Reed. Members, we do have one other item for business today. We all received the proposed calendar of meetings for 2023 in our materials. We do need a motion to approve that calendar. I just want to flag that one meeting has been removed for next year, which was the February meeting, I believe, has been removed. Is that right, Dorian? Excellent. So you've all received that calendar. Do we have a motion to approve that calendar for our 23 meetings? Moved by Regent Finley, second by Regent Perez. Any discussion or objection? Hearing none, the motion passes, so please save all those dates on your calendar. Commissioner, will one of our meetings be on the road, or?
We will. We will go on the road again next October.
All right.
So more to come on that.
Are we going to vote on where to go?
Well, I will say this. Regent David has already said, you know, we really, I really wanted to host in Lafayette, and along came a pandemic. So he's pushing hard to get an opportunity to do Lafayette, but more to come on that.
I like the new tradition of making the regents open their homes and throw the most competitive parties in each of them.
Well, since you set the bar so high, I don't know.
Indeed. So definitely save those dates, and we'll look for locations to be scheduled. Members, looking ahead, we do not meet in November, so our next meeting will be the joint BSE meeting that's scheduled for Wednesday, December 14. We'll start the day prior, on Tuesday, the 13th, around 2:00 p.m. with a board development session in the spirit of parties. Chairman and Mrs. Temple graciously offered to host our holiday reception at their home on the evening of Tuesday, December 13. I do not know that Chairman Temple is watching, so I'll clue you all in on a secret, that we are all texting him the fireworks, the big performance he missed last night to try to raise the bar of what he and Miss Temple do at their home on December 13, so you can tell him what he missed and amp it up, because I know that he will deliver. With that, is there any other business to come before the board today? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Regent Sterling, second by Regent Perez. Any discussion in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by saying nay. And hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Great meeting. Great, great.